Good afternoon, everyone. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll, please?
Good afternoon. Mr. Bailey?
Present.
Mr. Brown? Ms. Herbert?
Here.
Dr. Bustles?
Here.
Mr. Brennan?
Present.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Here.
Thank you.
Everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Reverend McDowell, would you mind saying a little word before we start?
As my heads. For your grace and your mercy, for all that you've done for us, for those who have gathered in this sacred building, bless us. Create within us a kind and peaceable spirit. Sensitize its leadership to your care. Allow the leadership of this building to be undergirded by grace and mercy. We ask it in your name. Amen.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council. At this time, we would ask that you adopt the agenda.
There are motions?
Some, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any changes, adopt, any questions or anything? Hearing none, seeing none. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, public input. The first opportunity is now. Individuals are allotted up to three minutes to address City Council about items on the agenda. Items requiring a public hearing cannot be addressed at this time.
Everyone that has signed up will speak at the end of the meeting in the next session.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Approval of minutes. Number one, council is asked to approve the April 15, 2025 budget workshop minutes and the April 15, 2025 regular meeting minutes.
Got a motion and a second. Any changes, questions? Seeing none, hearing none. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles? Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you.
At this point, I think our city manager would like to have a point of personal privilege.
I appreciate the opportunity, Mr. Mayor. We are, and probably don't think about this all the time because it's just what we do, including our seven wonderful members of City Council, but it is Public Service Recognition Week. And with that, we want to recognize the seven of you for all of the wonderful things you do and all of our wonderful, almost 2,300 city employees at the City of Columbia for Public Service Recognition Week. You know, it takes heart to do public service. We know that a lot of the things that we don't want our citizens to think about, it should be seamless, like the trash is picked up on time and the water is clean and our parks are fun and safe and all the things that make cities what they are. Of course, public safety, police and fire and public work. So with that, we wanted to celebrate a little bit today. So we have cake. Cake for everyone, a big, huge cake and ice cream. It is over here and as we keep going, we're gonna pass out this cake and just celebrate ourselves and hope that our citizens know that we do do it for them and it takes heart to do it. In addition to Public Service Recognition Week, we always recognize a really special person to us who works particularly hard behind the scenes every time of year, this time of year. And I want to say it's like the 56th year of Municipal Clerk Week. And so Ms. Erica Hammond, well, dear, we are recognizing you, my dear. Erica has, you know, they, they, she's just, I don't know what else to say. And there's some pictures of her on the screen or will be, but she has a partner in, not in crime, but keeping us straight, Ms. Levany Somerville. And so Levany, her deputy, is recognized, being recognized. Oh, Erica, we, you know, you're never put on the spot, but we appreciate you. We love you very much. Thank you for all that you do. So those were my two moments, Mr. Mayor, and you've got wonderful pictures of Erica and Levany, professional municipal clerks, and we appreciate them. Yeah. We love and appreciate you, okay? Yes. So we are full of presentations, Mr. Mayor, this Tuesday, adding to the ranks of public servants. And this will not be, this is my last personal privilege moment, but this will not be new for him in a way, but he's coming back. And we have an introduction of a new employee, a very important new member of our team as we are about to go down a journey of opening up Finley Park, hopefully in the fall. The new Finley Park activated with the right staff to lead that effort on a daily basis. And so I know Mr. Simons had a quick introduction for you today. Or I'm sorry, Mr. Kenya Bryant, our Director of Parks and Recreation.
Hey, John. Good to see you. Good to see you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Wilson, Mayor and members of City Council. Keep the good spirits going. I have the distinct privilege in introducing Mr. John Katz as the Program Manager of Finley Park. In his role, John will be directing the day-to-day operations of Finley Park. And we really felt it was imperative that we bring him on board at this juncture to ensure that he is involved with the construction, outfitting the park, hiring staff and a much anticipated grand opening. A little bit about John. John moved from Savannah to Columbia in 2015 during the construction of the award-winning Segra Park, where he served as a team president of the Columbia Fireflies until the end of the 2021 season. John was also an adjunct professor of sports management at the University of South Carolina from 2016 to 2021. He went on to spend the next three years working overseas in international football before coming home to Columbia last summer. After 30-plus career, 30-plus-year career in sports and entertainment, John has spent the past year working for contract construction, one of the key members of the joint venture team that built the ballpark in the heart of the Bull Street District. John and his wife Anne live in Shandon and are proud parents of the twin sons, Jacob and Ty, and the 2025 NCA TA All-American Daughter, Abby. Please join me in welcoming John Katz to our City of Columbia team. Thank you.
I just wanted to say it's great to be back in Columbia. Thank you all for entrusting me with this opportunity to give back to the city that has given so much to me and my family. I won't let you down. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mayor. If I could just add, Mr. John Katz, your look is a little bit different. And so I was like, is that John that I remember from the stadium? And I'm just really glad that you're back. You did a great job at Bull Street. He worked really well with the city. And we caused you to work really hard, but I'm glad to have you back. I called him so much that I called him and you were in some other country. You're like Tina, I'm not the person anymore. So I just had to say, welcome back. We're glad to have you.
Mr. Mayor, we'll continue with our wonderful presentations for today. The first being the Mayor's Campaign Against Breast Cancer Check Presentation to Prisma Health Midlands Foundation, the Honorable Daniel J. Rickaman Mayor.
Well, I wanted to invite Ms. Davis up to the podium as well. I think Ms. Williams is here, too. Do you want to come on up and join her? I wanted to give you all a minute before we present the check and say a few words.
Sure. Mayor Rickaman and Council members, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here this afternoon. I'm Dargan Davis and I'm here with Katie Williams. We work for Prisma Health Midlands Foundation and we just, we're here representing the Walt for Life and Famously Hot Pink Half Marathon, the signature event that the foundation hosts that raises money for Prisma Health Breast Centers. The foundation has raised over $12 million to fund the latest in digital mammography technology and enhancing the lives of breast cancer patients and survivors here in this community through this event. Last year, we hosted over 4,000 people at Segra Park. And we are grateful for the team at the City of Columbia that came out and supported us that day, walking in the race. And then also, we had you, Mayor Rickaman, as a part of our opening ceremony. So we're grateful for the support that y'all show us, not only through the Isabel Law Breakfast, but on the day of the event as well. With the help of the City of Columbia and their fundraising efforts, we're proud to report that we raised $542,000 in revenue. And all of those funds stay right here in the Midlands and benefit those that are currently being diagnosed with breast cancer or going through their breast cancer journey or on the other side and recovering from it. But we, once again, I want to thank you so much. The breakfast is such a phenomenal event. We thank you for hosting that annually and honoring the life of Isabel Law and also all of the fundraising efforts that that team does throughout the entire year to raise money for our program. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you all for what you do and partnering with us because it's a great, successful partnership. And, you know, Isabel Law was a giant in this community and what she did for not only being a survivor, but helping survivors is just incredible. And her story lives on with us here at the city. You know, but we couldn't do it without community partners and sponsors like Burr Foreman, Security Federal, the CB Group, you know, all the folks that showed up, our food trucks, Bubbleicious and Burton's Maryland-Style Seafood, all those folks that brought that extra. But I'm gonna be honest with you, I'm not satisfied because we got to get to $50,000. Our goal has to be $50,000 to get to where we want to be. So we're gonna do that. And Erica tells me we're gonna make it this year. All my team members say that we're gonna make it this year. We're gonna make the effort to get it to 50 because it has such a huge impact because those dollars stay here. But I'm not gonna complain that we're getting ready to hand you this check for $18,000.
Certainly. We're so thankful.
Man, I got the Tyler Davis off. I'm gonna get the pussy like that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next presentation, item number three, the Asian American and Pacific Islander Month Proclamation, the Honorable Oddity Bustles.
I'd like to invite up Dr. Lee and Angela Young, as well as their guests, to the podium. Great to see you guys. I'm gonna go ahead and say a few words, present the proclamation and then hand it over to you all, okay? All right. Well, it's a true honor to be here today with my friends, who are incredible leaders, advocates and folks that have really dedicated themselves to uplifting our Asian American community here in South Carolina. When I was first elected on City Council, they were some of my biggest champions and I became the first South Asian woman to serve in this role. And that milestone was deeply personal, but it was so much more than that. It was a moment that helped bring visibility to a small but mighty community that's doing some really great work in Columbia. Asian Americans are now the fastest-growing racial group in South Carolina, yet sometimes our stories, our struggles or our successes are often left out of the broader narrative. And so that's what today is about. It's about recognizing how far we've come, lifting up the heritage, resilience and joy that define this community. I'm especially grateful to see Governor McMaster, formerly recognized AAPI Month, and all of the great work that you all have been doing in terms of shedding light on such an amazing cause. I look forward to celebrating alongside of you, especially at Tour of Tea tomorrow, which I know Angela will tell us a little bit more about, as well as many other events that showcase the Asian American community here in South Carolina. So I wanted to thank you all for your work, your presence and your passion. It is my deep privilege to serve with you and stand beside you. And so now I am honored to go ahead and read some of the proclamation. Whereas the City of Columbia recognizes and celebrates the rich history, vibrant cultures and invaluable contributions of Asian American and Pacific Islander communities throughout our nation and our city. Whereas AAPI residents in Columbia represent a wide range of ethnicities, languages, traditions and experiences, and their impact is seen in every facet of civic life, from public service and education to business, science, health, arts and culture. And whereas Columbia is proud to uplift and honor the stories, achievements and leadership of AAPI individuals who contribute to our city's vibrant innovation and sense of community. On behalf of Mayor Rickaman, as well as my colleagues on council, I'm very honored to proclaim May 2025 is Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Thank you all so much.
Angela or Dr. Lee, whoever wants to go?
Thank you so much for doing this. I actually created an event. This will be our second year. It's called Tour of Tea. And it's tomorrow. It's free. What we're doing is bringing eight different Asian countries. We'll have snacks and tea for the public, but we will also have a series of performers. There'll be singers, dancers representing India, Philippines, Korea. And I'm just honored to have this opportunity to give voices right now in this time and uplift everybody and bring us all together.
Angela, can you tell us where and what time?
Oh, yeah, that's a good. So Tour of Tea is gonna be at the Columbia Museum of Art at the Boyd Plaza from four to six. Even if it rains, we have a rain-out plan.
Great. Thank you.
So bring all your friends. Dr. Lee? All right. We'll go ahead and take.
Mr. Mayor?
Not a party till something's broken, so.
It can be fixed. All right. Our Drinking Water Week Proclamation, item number four, the Honorable Daniel J. Rickaman Mayor.
Mr. Shealy? And our water team? There's a few of you here. Please come forward.
Just got a few folks here today with me, supporting me.
We always don't get to see all the smiling faces behind everything.
And our age range goes from old to very young now.
Is that our newest intern?
He is. He is. This is Dr. Byers Edison, so. Well, Mayor, thank you, Council and Ms. Wilson. Thank you all for the opportunity to recognize Drinking Water Week. In 1818, the Intents and Wardens of the Town of Columbia contracted with Abraham Blanding to build what was called the Columbia Watering Company. Our first drinking water came from springs in Seaboard Park, near where the post office in Finley Park is now. And in 1906, our thirsty community, kind of, our thirst outstripped the production from the strings and springs. So we went down to the river in the Columbia Canal. And we've been there for over 100, about 120 years, making clean drinking water there and now supplementing that with water from Lake Murray. Water, safe drinking water, clean drinking water is vital human infrastructure, critical for supporting public health and economic development. Today, we're distributing about 70 million gallons of drinking water to a thirsty and growing community through about 2,500 miles of pipeline and serving over 400,000 people. And today, we want to honor the legacy of those that came before us and the proud men, women and families that serve here in leadership roles for us currently. Thank you to this awesome team. You do a great job every day, 24/7, 365, and we appreciate you. And they're the folks that do the work. When y'all send issues to me in the evenings, they're the ones that respond and I'm so grateful to them. Mayor, Council, Ms. Wilson, thank you for your unwavering support of our drinking water system and our infrastructure. That's really what makes it happen and we appreciate it.
Clint, thank you for having the team here because I think a lot of people don't realize that every day, the efforts and the hours that y'all put in all the way across the line from customer service to the guys who are out there repairing leaks, who are working through the night to make sure everybody has drinking water. And I want to thank each and every one of you for what you do every day because not every city, not every place in the world is lucky to have what we have and we appreciate you protecting our asset. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, it's so fitting that this is Public Service Recognition Week with all of these wonderful teams. I don't know what, you know, we would do without our Columbia Water leadership and every single employee in that department. I'd expect all of them to get a piece of cake. And with that, National Historic Preservation Month Proclamation is our next recognition.
I know she's in the building.
The Honorable Daniel J. Rickaman Mayor and the 2025 Mabel Payne Historic Preservation Award, Ms. Amy Moore, Principal Planner for Planning and Development Services.
Amy, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So thanks for having me. Preservation Month again. We're celebrating our historic buildings, the unique sense of place and beauty that they bring to our wonderful city. As always, we, the preservation staff, have a lot planned for the month. I have calendars.
All right.
And I'll leave them here. So we have hands-on workshops. We have lunch and learns. We have bike tours. We have a lot going on. So we hope people will sign up. We have had our calendar out for just a couple of days and we're almost to capacity already. So if people are interested, they need to register. Everything's free, but you just have to register. So I have to say, it's one of the most delightful parts of my job that I get to present the Mabel Payne Award each year to a person who's demonstrated outstanding effort in education, leadership, conservation or stewardship of the city's historic resources. Our award winners may or may not be well-known locally. They may work behind the scenes or they may be front and center, but no matter what, their work and their example has had a significant impact on Columbia and our historic built environment. This year, I'm very pleased to announce that our award recipient for leadership and design excellence is Scott Garvin of Garvin Design Group. Scott and his firm have been key architects in an amazing number of high-visibility rehabilitation projects in the city. Granby and Olympia Mills, that was early. Palmetto Compress, that was a tough one. 701 Whaley, Hendrix Math, Shepherd's Hotel, Gadsden Place, City Market, Gervais Place, those are just a few. And Scott has been both developer and architect on a bunch of those. So the beautiful work he does on these buildings, allowing them to retain their character while adapting them to new uses, reflects his eye for detail and his commitment to quality. So he almost always works on tax credit projects and incentive projects for start properties, whether they're his own or for someone else. And these put whole new levels of regulation and complexities on top of basic rehabilitation and construction. And in spite of this, I can't think of a time when Scott couldn't solve a design issue that arose because he's just that good and that creative. What's more, he's employing and mentoring a whole group of younger architects to have that same wonderful competency. In short, he's a joy to work with, going on for almost two decades. And I'm happy to celebrate his excellent work, which always vitalizes and moves our city forward.
Thank you very much, Amy and Council. I was shocked when I got the phone call on Friday. It was just a real honor for me. And I do, I do love the old buildings. I remember when I was getting ready to go to college to study architecture, my grandmother in Aiken was a historic preservationist. And I told her I was going into architecture and she said, why? I said, well, I just can't wait to do new buildings. She goes, well, the new ones are fun, but the old ones hold stories. And if you save the old ones, you'll always tell the story of the community. And that's always stuck with me. So I just really love suburban infill, historic development. And I'm very honored. Thank you.
You heard Ms. Moore talk about all the projects that Scott has done throughout this city. Scott's passion for our community, the preservation, but also new construction and being able to, how you fit that and weave it in to make us a very vibrant city. And Scott just doesn't do architectural work. He actually invests. He is there. He's one of those folks who puts his money where his mouth is and he believes in our community. So thank you, Scott, for your continued... So thank you, Scott, for your continued work, and, and knowing that you're training our next generation gives us a lot of comfort. So thank you. With that, we get to roll into our next presentation.
Yes, sir.
Which is National Preservation Month. And I'd like to read this proclamation. And Amy, where'd she go? We want to be able to give it to you on behalf of the department, if we could. May has declared National Preservation Month, and it's been since 1973, and so again in 2025. City of Columbia adopted its first preservation ordinance in 1963, and its first historic districts in 1964. Historic preservation is relevant for all communities across the nation, both urban, rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds. Historic preservation has been established in cities across the nation, is an effective tool for economic and sustainability development, tourism promotion, community revitalization, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. It is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of heritage that have shaped us as a people and a nation. So therefore, I, Daniel Rickaman, the Mayor of the City of Columbia, along with my fellow members of council, do by here proclaim May 2025 as the great, as in the great city of Columbia, and urge its fellow citizens to recognize and participate in National Preservation Month, and also goes along with the Dawn Staley Month. So it's a double win for us in Columbia in the month of May. And with that, I'd like to present this proclamation to you, Amy Moore, for all your hard work and your departments and our entire city planning. Anybody else here from planning? There's Lucinda. Everybody, please stand up. Let everybody be recognized. We are on a roll. We got one more to go.
Turn on my mic. Number six, National Bike Month and Bicycle Safety Month proclamation, the Honorable Daniel J. Rickaman, Mayor.
I'm going to yield the floor to Ms. Lucinda Sadler.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor, Members of Council. On behalf of everyone in planning, I'd like to thank you for your support of Bike Month, which gives us an opportunity each year to celebrate our successes and also to raise awareness about the challenges we face in providing safe and equitable facilities for cyclists, who are among the most vulnerable, vulnerable road users. As we are also wrapping up the downtown strategic planning process, it's been really encouraging to hear from our community about their desire to walk and bike around downtown safely and comfortably, in protected bike lanes, on wider sidewalks with trees, towards a vision of a less car-centric downtown. On average, 52% of all daily trips that people take are under three miles. 28% of all trips are under one mile, meaning that many of those could be taken on foot or on a bike. Bicycles provide that opportunity to close the gap between destinations that are a little too far to walk and, but are just easy, as easy, or sometimes even easier than taking a car. So when walking and cycling become part of our culture of our city, we will reduce traffic congestion and the demand for parking, improve health outcomes, and attract and retain the next generation of leaders for Columbia. A couple of projects we wanted to highlight and celebrate this year include South Main Street, which is about to be completed. It'll be the first cycle track in Columbia. Last summer, we celebrated the first buffered bike lane on River Drive that was installed, has been heavily used. And then related to that, next week, we're kicking off the community workshop for the development of that property adjacent to the Vista Greenway, which is really exciting. We realize that the success of these projects involve partnerships with multiple agencies and with the public, and we, and working towards the same goal of a safer multimodal city. We look forward to continuing these partnerships and are particularly excited about the new penny funding, which will continue to fund bikeway projects and improve connectivity. And I think you've all, or if you don't yet, you will have a Bike Month poster. We also did this, put together by our planning staff every year. It's beautiful, but it represents events and activities that the cycling community throughout Columbia are doing, not only for Bike Month in May, but throughout the year. So a couple of highlights from here. Tonight at 6:30, the Colletown Bike Collective will host a screening of the street project at the Nickelodeon, followed by a panel discussion. Bike to Work Day is next Friday, the 16th. And then the ultimate combination of Bike Month and Preservation Month is the Preservation Bike Ride, that Sunday, May 19th. So we hope that some of y'all will be able to join us for that.
Yes, Ms. Herbert.
Why did y'all think I was gonna say anything?
Because we saw you.
First of all, I commend you all. I don't know if y'all know, but I'm always trying to find activities to do. In Sada, I used to ride bikes when I was a very, very, very young lawyer, because I didn't have any money, and it was free. We could do it all the time. So I, I have enjoyed the recent bike rides, although I'm not young anymore. It's been fun. But I did want to ask, too, do we have e-bikes still available for some of those folks who may not be ready to ride however many miles that's gonna be on Sunday?
But we're very close.
Okay.
So we probably won't have them by that date, but we're very, very close to getting that, the bike share system back up and running.
Is it all level?
The, the bike ride?
Yes.
I, I don't know. Our preservation folks are working on the route, so we'll, we'll let, we can, but we can provide it in advance.
Yeah, make it all.
Make it all level.
So everyone can enjoy it.
I hear you.
On all levels.
We will definitely take that.
She's asking for a friend.
Yeah, but I want Tyler to come this time, so. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bailey?
Nothing.
I just wanted to ask, this is, this is wonderful. Could you share this with us in an electronic version, so we can share with our networks as well?
It's on our website, too. And also, if you, the QR code, yeah, you can get to it there.
Oh, perfect. Okay.
Certainly send you a direct link as well.
Well, with that, as the mayor, we're going to, along with council, proclaim the month of May as National Bike Month, Bike, Bike Safety Month, National Ride a Bike Day, National Bike to Work Week, and with that, and along with that, Bike to Work Day. So you get a week, a day, a month. So there's no excuse for you all not to be on your bikes across the city. But I want to present this to y'all for, for that, and thank you for all your hard work that y'all put for over the years on this, and we're starting to see it happen slowly but slowly across our city. Well, that precludes our presentations. It's a joyous day in the City of Columbia.
Absolutely. You're, you, you all deserve cake, too, for getting through all of those. We are with, now at the point on the agenda for the consent items. Mr. Mayor, Consent Agenda Item 7 through 21.
So we have Items 7 through 21. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, so second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussions, questions, concerns? Seeing none or hearing none, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 22, Consideration of Bids, Contracts, and Change Orders. Item 22, Council is asked to approve American Institute of Architects, AIA, Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment Number One for the project, as noted, a construction manager at-risk project for the City of Columbia Public Safety Complex at 400 Laurel Street, as requested by General Services on April 3rd, 2025.
Motion to approve.
So we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussions or questions? Really looking forward to this facility being up and running. It's gonna be a great asset for, for the city. With that, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance is first reading, Item 23, Ordinance Number 2025-040, consenting to the inclusion of property in a multi-county industrial business park, 604 Hugh G. LLC, 617 Divine Street Associates LLC in Richland County. And this item was referred out of the Economic Development Committee. Mr. Mayor?
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussions or questions? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Resolutions, Item 24, Resolution Number R2025-018, Approval for Acquisition of .03-acre portion of 2409 Santee Avenue and Identified as Richland County TMS Number, as outlined, as CIP project also as outlined.
Motion to approve.
Is there a motion? No, we got the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? This is acquisition of property that the city's at, for construction of detention pond for stormwater maintenance in the Waverly and Five Points area. So this is our continuing investment to reduce flooding in those areas. With that, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Other Matters, Item 25, Council is asked to approve an allocation of $30,000 to the South Carolina Black Pages USA for the 28th Annual Black Expo.
Motion, second? No motion and a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Item 26, Council is asked to approve an allocation of $25,000 to the Soda City Football Club for the FC Women's Program.
Motion to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Got a motion and a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just want to make some comments on this.
Please.
As, as we all know, soccer, football, whatever you want to call it, is growing in popularity, not just in Columbia, but in, in the Midlands. The recent national success from a local football club, Soda City, winning two championships, and they came and celebrated here with us, is very exciting. They approached us in conjunction with the Rosewood Merchant Association about bringing semi-professional soccer to downtown. So we are looking to welcome the first women's semi-professional football, or soccer club, you start playing at the end of May in Memorial Stadium in partnership with Richland School District One. So it's gonna be great. We'll have a total of eight games, and please look for wonderful announcements coming soon. Dr. Bustles has, has been a champion with me on this, and we're excited to see it come. Dr. Bustles?
Yeah, and on the heels of Mayor's hard work to get the beautiful statue of Dawn Staley, I just want to highlight that Columbia continues to really show the courage and inspiration to young girls and women everywhere by investing in initiatives like this. It's so much more than a soccer game. It's the ability for us to build a future in women's sports and really put our city on the map as a city that's already full of champions, to then shed light on all of these other opportunities that girls and women can have in their future. So very much looking forward to bringing this to life and working alongside Councilman Brennan to make it happen.
Thank you both. With that, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, it is time for City Council Committee Reports, Referrals, and New Business.
Are there any reports, referrals, or new business today? With that, I'm seeing a no here, Madam Clerk.
Oh, I, sorry. One, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to provide a brief update to colleagues from the Health, Environmental, and Social Affairs Committee. We talked about our current stormwater and some of the trends that we're seeing, and the impact of Hurricane Helene, as well as other storms that affected some of our goals around stormwater and wastewater management. Had a great conversation about our goals moving forward and looking forward to working with Clint and his team as we continue to grow and improve our water system.
Thank you very much. Any other reports or referrals? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. It's that magical time.
Public input, the individuals are allotted up to three minutes to address City Council. Items requiring a public hearing cannot be addressed at this time.
So first, we have Mr. Bill Frye, and he's here to speak with council about parking.
Hello. This is a $50 parking ticket that I got for no area parking. I was working a DoorDash shift, trying to grab food from a restaurant downtown and get it to a customer on time. The spot I used was the same one I've seen USPS, UPS, and even Domino's drivers use. But on that day, only those of us working app-based delivery jobs got tickets. I was frustrated, so I wrote a letter to Mayor Rickaman, and I explained that I'm a recent college graduate, working to make ends meet, and that a $50 fine isn't just annoying, but that's a serious setback. I asked the city to consider short-term loading zones for app-based drivers like me, who are providing an essential service with nowhere legal to stop. A few weeks later, I got a letter back and a reimbursement from the mayor. It's a little short, but it's okay. And while I was appreci, and while I appreciated that response, it reminded me of something bigger. If a single $50 ticket sparked a personal exchange with the mayor, maybe this isn't just about one driver or one fine. Maybe it's about a system that isn't working for a lot of us, and it's time we talk about it. And I'm not the only one who feels this way. My name is Bill Frye, and in April, I started a petition calling for smarter, fairer parking policies in the City of Columbia. In one month, it garnered over 180 signatures from people across our community, residents, students, small business owners, and workers, who are feeling the pressure of a broken system. This is more than just about convenience. It's about access, equity, and economic health. And now, with over 700 USC employees being required to return to campus in July, things are only gonna get worse. That means that hundreds more cars, more congestion, and more competition for the same limited parking. So what can we do? Here are a few reasonable, low-cost changes the City of Columbia can implement right here, right now, to make parking fair for everyone. And I've provided a list of some stuff. By the way, thank you to the parking people. They have reached out to me, so thank you again. Update the Passport Parking App to show that parking is free on weekends, except in Five Points. I believe we discussed Bull Street as well. Offer a 10-minute grace period after a parking session expires. As it stands, just being a few minutes late can lead to a $25 fine. My parking just expired, so I'm about to have to run and pay that. Allow more grace for delivery drivers who are stopping briefly to pick up food. Improve signage and clarity around parking rules. By the way, thank you again for posting some stuff on Instagram. I saw some stuff that was clear, but I'd like to see, I think everybody would like to see it a little bit more clear on the streets. Promote that some city parking decks offer a free first hour. Give local businesses more liable parking access to their staff and customers, because when parking dries up, so does foot traffic. And finally, reconsider the cost of tickets. For a small mistake or first-time violations, $25 and $50 can be harsh, especially for students. $25 and $50 can be harsh, especially for students, workers, and lower-income residents. With change, we can create a more efficient, fair, and inclusive system that benefits everyone, residents, visitors, workers, and businesses alike. Let's make parking in Columbia work for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Frye. You know, some of these things that we've been working on already and will be coming out. There are also loading zones that people aren't utilizing. You know, there are things out there. There's a lot of free parking across the city if you're willing to sort it out. But some of it is communicating it and making sure that people understand where it is and when they can use it and how they can use it. And that's one of the things that we're working through since we just really are into the second month of the new process. And your suggestions are great. We've, I think we're implementing some of them now. Some of those will be some spots where DoorDash people can or any other delivery can pop in and out. Loading zones, obviously, a lot of people haven't been utilizing those as well and there have been people there parking. So changing the hours on that too will help alleviate those folks who are dashing in and out. But we're going to continue to improve the system, make it as best we can. But, you know, we end up having to work together on this to solve our problems. And thank you for taking the time to be here.
And thank you for reaching out to me. Thanks very much.
Yes.
I'd like to say, I'll also say thanks. You know, we went through a pretty substantial parking change after 20 years of no change. So it was always meant to be a living, breathing, evolving animal. So your input is much, is very welcomed and we're going to, we're going to continue to tighten up the process and make it where it is fair and equitable. But it's also, it came from such a bad place from where it was that it's going to take some time to hash out. So thank you for your comments and anybody who has, this is a pretty open council and anybody who's got similar comments or suggestions, complaints are also somewhat welcome, but more suggestions than complaints because they actually make a difference. So thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Nathaniel Hampton. Next, we have Save Our Kids.
Good afternoon, Councilman, Mr. Mayor. You know when the conversation we had at the Friday's chat?
Yeah.
And what did you tell me?
Which, which thing?
Come on now. Okay, you said do a proposal.
Yeah.
So I did one. And, uh, but my main concern is 1600 Lark Avenue.
Wait, what, say that again?
My concern is 1600 Lark Avenue.
Okay.
That's Alamo Manor.
Yeah.
And Lark Park. I talked to Mr. Anderson probably last November in reference to putting that back that speed bump. Now, Mr. Kamadi got a speed bump in his area, but where the kids are going towards the park, Alamo Manor to Lark.
Coming down the hill.
Right. Mr. Anderson said there's a water leak over there, so they can't put the speed bump back. But those cars are flying. And I sit and I watch those kids. Sometime when the little babies come across the road, I get out of my truck and walk them across the street and I'll wait till they get ready to go back home. And my thing, we need that speed bump back there like yesterday.
Well, Lee, one of the, there's some alternative, they're not speed humps or bumps, but they're alternative ways, platforms and stuff that other cities are using. So maybe that's something we could try there. So it wouldn't inhibit the water, but it does slow down the traffic and try something like that. We'd be glad to take a look at that, especially with the redevelopment of Latimore Manor because we're going to have a lot more traffic and a lot more kids.
Right, right. And there's a lot of kids in Latimore Manor. And there's probably around about 150, even though they are moving out and they are closing up their apartment units. But there's still a lot of kids because a lot of those parents cannot move because they can't find a place to live. Because a lot of people are not accepting sex or age vouchers. And so they're leaving a lot of people without going to a nice decent area, a nice decent home. But I did the proposal. I know Mr. Henry Simon asked that I give him one. And so I was working on it, brother. And so I finally got it. And so I'm going to give you one and Ms. Teresa one and Mr. Henry Simon. Because we want to have free summer camp for the least of us. Because I looked in this book, my kids cannot afford this and the parents cannot afford this. And $85, when I used to work at Pinehurst and Lark, it was only $25 and I paid for.
You just dated yourself, by the way. You realize that, right?
Right, right, right.
Because that was like 20 years ago.
Right, right. And we don't keep hoping that. We want to offer free summer camp to all that want to come to the least of us. And Save Our Kid will pay for the first year. And if we get the numbers up, then I would like for the city to include in that second year of help paying for some of your kids to come.
Leave us the proposal and we'll get back to you. Probably, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Could you share that?
Yeah, with council, yes, absolutely. We'll make copies for everybody. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Next, we have Reverend Karen Ramison.
Hello.
Good evening.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. Today, I want to speak about Attorney General's recommendation regarding City Ordinance 2021-021. And I speak today opposing the idea that conversion therapy be allowed. Some say that by not allowing conversion therapy, we restrict religious freedom. I say it does not. The only thing that conversion therapy does is allow guilt and shame to be imposed on our gay and lesbian community. So as a clergy person in the community, I want to say, please oppose such an idea. I look often to scripture and I notice that you opened the council meeting with prayer. So I'm going to ask that we consider the scriptures that are so often used to condemn the LGBTQ community and to consider the context of those scriptures. And they were written in a day and time when communities were concerned about the sustainability of their population. With famine and disease, people feared being eliminated. We don't have that problem today. I also turn to Micah 6:8 that says, and most people are familiar with that in the Christian community, "to do justice, love mercy, and walk humbly." Conversion therapy is not merciful. Conversion therapy is not justice. And conversion therapy is not humble. And I also refer to scripture again when Jesus was asked what the greatest commandment was. He simply replied, "To love the Lord your God with all your heart, with all your mind, with all your strength, and with all your soul." So I ask, and then to go on to say that the second commandment is very much like it, to love your neighbor as yourself. So I ask those who are part of the Christian community, the Buddhist community, Baha'i, Sikh, Hindu, any of the multitude of faith traditions that we host in Columbia, do we love our source, our deity, our God enough to love our LGBT community and our neighbors? So the final one that I want to share is, at Easter in the Christian community, we often observe the Lord's Supper, the final supper, in which, after sharing the bread and the fruit of the vine, Jesus gave His disciples a new commandment, to go into the world and to love one another. And He continued by saying, "It is by My love, by Your love, that the world will know You are My disciples." So let's show the world that Columbia is a loving, merciful, and just community. Thank you.
Thank you for being here, Reverend. Madam Clerk?
Mr. PJ Whitehurst.
We have everybody's address on there, right?
No.
I'm sorry. Just state your name. I should have asked the Reverend and I didn't have address as well when you, when you talked, just so we keep a record of where everybody's from. Thank you.
Oh, um, my name is PJ Whitehurst. I'm a community health worker with Reformation Lutheran Church and I am the Safe Space Outreach Coordinator who works with LGBTQ plus youth, homeless and housing insecure youth and young adults. I am a man of faith. I'm an advocate, an activist, and I'm also transgender. In fact, I prayed this morning after reading my Bible for some type of peace and yet here I am right now. I'm here not only because of my community and my beliefs, I am here because I have seen firsthand, I have cared for, and watched children be kicked out of their homes. I was almost kicked out of mine solely for who they are. I am here as an example of it does not matter how you grow up, whether it's conservative, liberal, or other, it does not change who you are. Conversion therapy is not therapy. It's child abuse. Like the example of the Alex Cooper story where she was sent away by her parents because she was gay to a city in Utah where the family forced her to carry a backpack filled with rocks so she would understand the burden of being gay. Where two young men in the same house were forced to fight each other to become men and if they did not do a good enough job, the male adult would step in and do it for them. You may not believe that conversion therapy is abuse. You may go against the American Psychological Association and the DSM-5, but I am here to tell you, like many others, that if you repeal this ban, you will be the cause of their abuse. As suicide rates continue to skyrocket for our most vulnerable population, you will be responsible for those deaths. Luke 18:15 through 17 says, "Let the little children come to Me and do not hinder them, for the kingdom of God belongs to such as these." Jesus showed concern for children's well-being, urging to protect them and not allow them to be harmed. And although your definition and my definition may be different, the stories remain the same. The stories of pain, suffering, and abuse from youth and young adults who have been harmed by your definition. The harm that this will cause is detrimental and I will say it again, you will be responsible for the abuse and suicide rates that continue to skyrocket throughout our state and our country. And you will show that you do not care that these children are disposable to you, but they will never be disposable to us. So I beg you, do not repeal this ban and whatever Attorney General Allen Wilson has to say. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Wade Fulmer.
Think he left.
Mr. Christina Palaz or Pacozzi?
You were close.
Did you pronounce it first?
Yes, I will. My name's Christina Pacozzi.
Pacozzi, thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Christina Pacozzi and I'm the Executive Director for the Harriet Hancock Center. The Harriet Hancock Center is an LGBTQ community and resource center residing in District Three. We've been there for over 30 years. And I'm standing here today to present you all with a letter urging the City of Columbia Council to stand strong and maintain the current ordinance 2021-21, more commonly known as the conversion therapy ban. This letter is signed not only by a dozen leaders of the LGBTQ and allied community, but also 429 signatures of residents in your districts, as well as those who work and do business in the City of Columbia. This ordinance has been misconstrued by Attorney General as a First Amendment issue, to which it is not. Conversion therapy is not actually a therapy. It is a practice deemed harmful by the American Psychological Association and the American Medical Association, among many others. Living in South Carolina, I recognize that there are many who are guided by their faith, as we've had a few already stand up. This ordinance does not prevent practitioners from being religious, rather ensures licensed professionals are using evidence-based ethical practices with their clients. Columbia is a diverse city and there are multiple attacks at the state and federal level on queer people. Maintaining this ordinance not only keeps LGBTQ youth and adults safe, but it tells them that there is nothing wrong with them and that they belong here in Columbia. I've brought each of you a letter and would welcome conversations with each of you as well to provide information and education about these harmful practices, as well as what we're doing in Columbia and the Midlands to support the health and well-being of the LGBTQ community.
Thank you for being here.
All right, next, we have Mr. Curtis Kiesler.
Good evening, good evening. My name is Curtis Kiesler. I'm a licensed professional counselor in the state of South Carolina. I work for two nonprofits. One, for my day job, what I do is I work with at-risk youth, so helping with diversion programs as a family therapist. And I also work with You Belong Community Services, a local nonprofit, providing care to underserved populations. I got this, this nice little letter from Allen Wilson across my desk yesterday morning, actually. And so I wrote up quite a lengthy response to him. But as it pertains to the city, I wanted to thank the city council for putting this ordinance in place. Truthfully, it just kind of backs up the profession of therapists. In South Carolina, licensed professional counselors are held to certain ethical standards and those standards are well documented. When I read through this letter from the Attorney General, he didn't mention any of those things, so I just kind of wanted to bring them up to you guys and just kind of point out some of the ethical and legal and professional issues. So the ACA Code of Ethics is something that licensed professional counselors have to follow. In section A4B, personal values counselors are aware of and avoid imposing their own values, attitudes, beliefs, and behaviors. That means me, as a Buddhist therapist, I can't tell you, "Chen Nam Yo Ho Ring Ge Keo," and it's going to change your life and that's the only intervention. Not allowed to do that. I might say and use that wisdom, hey, mindfulness, you know, practices are helpful for relieving stress. My client has stress, okay. But I can't tell them, you know, exactly what mindfulness practices to use to relieve their stress. I'd have to introduce them to my client, see what they like and see what works for them. Therapy is the art of guidance, not the art of telling people what they should do with their lives. The AG talks about the statutory authority of the state versus municipal preemption. This is interesting. I think from what I've read, municipalities retain authority to enact ordinances that protect public health and safety. As I said before, licensed professional counselors in the state of South Carolina, all of that's in Title 40, Chapter 75, and allows for disciplinary action against licensees who cause harm. Moving on with that point, for the protection of minors Moving on with that point, for the protection of minors from harm is compelling government interest for the City of Columbia. In Ferguson versus Jonah, New Jersey, back in 2015, they determined that reorientation therapy, escape therapy, by a unanimous jury, was not ethical and illegal. And they made all of those parties pay back all the monies that they gained from engaging in those types of therapies. As well, this decision said that homosexuality is not a mental health disease to be treated. So the APA, ACA, AMA, and a bunch of medical boards kind of stated, that's not a good thing for people. Freedom of religion is not licensed to harm. So while as therapists, we could talk about what our religion is or what our client's religion is, if they talked to us about it first, if disclosing that information would not be harmful to the therapeutic relationship, we wouldn't necessarily be able to persuade them using religious beliefs. We would have to rely on tested and evaluated, peer-reviewed interventions. The First Amendment does not provide unrestricted rights for professionals acting under state licensure. The ordinance applies equally to all providers, regardless of religion, and restricts specific conduct, not belief or speech in general forums. So I think on that grounds, it's protecting kids, not allowing the license to harm. And then finally, the Act does allow medical professionals to opt out of providing, sorry, the AG mentioned the Medical Ethics and Diversity Act of 2022. The Act does allow medical professionals to opt out of providing certain care based on conscience. So that means, I don't think I'm the best fit for you. Like, I'm a Buddhist. I can talk to you about Christian stuff. I went to Newberry College, which is a Lutheran college. I know a lot about the religion of Christianity, but at the same time-
Mr. Kiesler, I have to ask you to wrap up, because you gave me a little more time than you were allotted out of respect.
Absolutely, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay, my bad. So, at the end of the day, I believe the City of Columbia is within its right to protect youth from coercive and harmful interventions. This ordinance does not target religion. It targets dangerous, unethical practice that has been disavowed by every major health organization in the United States. While religious liberty and free speech are important, they do not extend to state-licensed professionals imposing harmful interventions on minors under the guise of counseling.
Thank you.
And next, we have Raven Larry Moore Kelly.
Good day, Mr. Chair of Mayor, Mr. Mayor Rickman, and council members. It's a pleasure to be here today. Thank you all for having me. My name is Raven Larry Moore Kelly. Some of you may remember me as Samuel L. Jackson's raped daughter in the movie A Time to Kill by John Grisham, or as young Tina Turner in the movie What's Love Got to Do with It. I was recently blessed to be selected as the Richland County Library Headliner to kick off Black History Month here in Columbia. Columbia is a beautiful, vast city with lovely, diverse citizens. My husband Sean Dinwoodie and I are proud members of Reformation Lutheran Church here in Columbia, under the leadership of our wonderful pastor Stephen Curry Gallego. Part of why my husband and I chose Reformation Lutheran to raise our two boys that you saw I came in here with today is because the congregation truly reflects Jesus's love for all. That Christian love is put into action in our congregation because our church is actively promoting God's message of unconditional love throughout social justice and supporting our LGBTQ plus IA family members in Christ. The LGBTQIA+ community is truly our family in Christ here in Columbia. Unfortunately, Attorney General Wilson has misconstrued the interpretation of ordinance 2021-021. And we believe it is vital and incumbent upon all of us, each and every single one of us as Christians here in Columbia, to show Jesus's love by protecting all Colombians, regardless of race, gender, creed, or sexual orientation. In Scripture, God tells us in Galatians 3:28, "There is no longer Jew or Greek; there is no longer slave or free; there is no longer male or female, for all of you are one in Christ Jesus." Amen? Conversion therapy is not kind. Conversion therapy is not loving. Conversion therapy is not of Jesus. Today, I implore you all, each and every single one of you all here today, my wonderful esteemed council members and the Honorable Mayor Rickman, from the bottom of my heart, I ask you all to please make the best decision. Today, I implore all of you to look deep into your hearts as a council, to not repeal this ban, to make the best decision to maintain the ordinance for the sake of all of Jesus's children in Columbia. Please, Mr. Mayor and council members, make the kind, the loving, and the Christ-like decision to send a message to the world that here in Columbia, we protect all of our residents, in Jesus's name. Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Matthew Butler.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Matthew Butler. I'm an advocacy strategist with the ACLU of South Carolina and Board President of the Harriet Hancock Center Foundation. I am here also to talk about the recent controversy regarding City Ordinance 2021-21. Let's be clear, your ordinance protects children. It does not infringe on the speech of clergy, nor the convictions of counselors acting in faith. But it does draw a moral and legal line when a licensed professional offers so-called conversion therapy to a child, therapy that every leading medical and mental health association has denounced as dangerous, ineffective, and cruel. This is not about political ideology. It's about professional standards. It's about ensuring that no child in Columbia walks into a counselor's office and leaves with more shame than hope. Some have tried to recast this ordinance as a threat to religious liberty. That is not only false, it's cynical. The First Amendment does not protect licensed professionals when they cause harm in the name of treatment. And the ordinance you pass, the ordinance that you pass, respects that line. It does not touch sermons or pastoral care. It only ensures that when a licensed practitioner puts their credential on the wall, they must do no harm. We are proud, severely proud, that Columbia was the first city in South Carolina to enact this kind of protection. And we ask you today, do not retreat. Do not abandon the children and the community. Your ordinance was written to shield. Reject the Attorney General's demand to undo what is right. Stand firm, because the test of leadership is not whether you can weather applause, it's whether you will hold the line when the winds shift. Thank you.
Mayor, we have Dr. Winn Purvis.
I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't catch the last name, Dr. Winn.
Purvis. Afternoon. I am Dr. Winn Purvis. I am a counselor educator and clinician. I have 25 years of experience as a licensed clinician in North and South Carolina, and I've also been training clinicians for about 15 years in the practice of counseling in a professional setting. I want to echo and accentuate what the prior individuals have asserted, but I'm going to read, it's going to be a little bit of repetition, but also want to point out some specific things. As a licensed professional counselor in North Carolina and South Carolina, and a seasoned counselor educator and supervisor, I would like to provide some clarification regarding the language of therapy, ethics, and core elements of a person's identity in response to the call to end conversion therapy ban in the City of Columbia. In our quarter of a century specializing in trauma-informed care, sexuality wellness, and various mental health concerns, I have learned through training and experience that when an experience is tightly woven into a person's identity, it is not on the menu for clinicians to treat. Why? The concepts of consent and boundaries are integral to the Professional Code of Ethics, to which I encourage everyone to read. Nowhere in our code does it permit a professional counselor to impose our religious or moral beliefs upon a client under the guise of therapy. Indeed, I want to highlight that conversion therapy is not therapy. I know that folks have said that, but we do not need to be using that language. When we use the word "therapy" in response to conversion interventions, we are communicating a sense of fear in the community to actually get to the therapy services that our clients need to get to. I can't tell you how many people are afraid to go to therapy because they're afraid that me, as a clinician, that I and my colleagues are going to try to change who they are, that we are going to try to impose our values and beliefs and biases on that individual. It's really hard to get individuals into the door to address the trauma that impacts them. And I promise you that 90% of what I see that comes in the door has a foundation grounded in trauma. I encourage you to come to any of my trainings on trauma-informed care if you're interested as well. When we're looking at the fact that some folks advertise themselves as Christian counselors, I want to assert that that is basically putting it out there, what their biases, what their lens is. But there is nothing that is called Christian counseling that is reimbursable by insurance companies. That's not on the list of specialties, okay? What we're supposed to be doing is providing evidence-based care, and we may do that through whatever lens that we choose to do and that we disclose to clients. But that does not mean that Christian counseling is a specialty within counseling. This is not also to say that any person is barred from spiritual guidance and coaching from a Christian perspective. There are many resources. I integrate the Christian lens into my counseling when it is appropriate, when my clients ask for that. But I also integrate Buddhism, Hinduism, and any other faith that my clients identify that they want to integrate into that experience. I've collaborated with many spiritual mentors to support efforts to create overall wellness for my clients. However, religious practices are not therapy. They are interventions grounded in religious beliefs rather than evidence-based practices designed to address mental health diagnoses and challenges. And let me go ahead and remind that it has been over five decades since this was removed, since homosexuality was removed as a mental health disorder. It is not a disorder. That has been determined. So therefore, conversion therapy can't be treating anything, right? Because it doesn't exist as a disorder. Reparative interventions are not endorsed to be used by any professional mental health services. Professional counselors are not endorsed by professional accreditation organizations or licensing boards to engage in any pseudoscientific practices. I want to wrap up by saying, conversion and reparative practices are pseudoscience, much like the rebirthing therapy movement that ended up killing a 10-year-old girl. This is abuse, and we do not need to permit that to happen.
No one else has signed up to speak.
All right. Mr. Brennan?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session for receipt of legal advice relating to a pending threatened or potential claim pursuant to SC Code 3470A2, Marvin Haygood versus Martin Booker in the City of Columbia, as well as discussion of matters relating to the proposed location, expansion, or provision of services encouraging location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body pursuant to SC Code 30-4-70A5, Project Catalyst, Project Sparrow, and Project QG.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
And Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Ms. Wilson?